There you go, switch it out.
We've got to move over now, or is that false?
We have seven council members, but two of them are out. And, uh, law, legal, internal auditor.
All right. Forty-five minutes. I gotta go pick up my kids.
I think he's got a whole bus hold.
You okay?
Yep.
Good. Okay. All right. We are reconvening as Wacomico County Council and Legislative Session 2018-26 for November 20th, 2018. Uh, next item on the agenda for the open work sessions, the status of Wacomico County Nursing Home. And, uh, Mr. Wayne Strausberg, of course, is here. And, Mr. Strausberg, we'll let you introduce our guests.
Sure. Uh, to my far left is Mr. Jim Crisp. Jim is a partner with Gross Mendelson and has headed up the audit team at the Wacomico Nursing Home for how many years now, Jim?
Uh, probably twenty years.
Yeah, as long as I've been around. Uh, and Heather Sammis, to my immediate left, is the Nursing Home Director. And, um, what I would really like to do is turn this over to Mr. Crisp because I think he can really give you an in-depth overview of the nursing home finances and what we're looking at here and is available to answer any questions you may have. It's a lot of data, a lot of information.
All right. Great.
Turn it over to you, Jim.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jim Crisp. And what I gave you today was a bunch, a series of documents I thought we might touch upon, where it'd be available if you have questions. So actually, on the top of what I had given you was where Wacomico Nursing Home's operations are through September 30th, 2018. And basically, what I wanted to focus on is on page three of that report. That's the statement of revenue and expenses. And you will see for year-to-date, for the first three months of their fiscal year, which is a year that ends on June 30th. They have experienced another additional loss of $178,000. So part of the reason we're here today is talk about the future of the organization and potentially, um, what might need to be done in order to make this a break even and hopefully, one day, a profitable entity. Okay? So with that in mind, um, and you may, you're probably already aware of this, but through June of 2018, there was a pretty significant loss experience. And there was one also in June of 2017.
What does it show in here, accounts receivable? I mean, is there any money owed to the nursing home that hasn't been collected?
Yeah, what would, what you would see on page two would be the accounts receivable balance, which would encompass private Medicare and Medicaid receivables. Um, and so, like anything else that happens in the industry, sometimes they're paid on a timely basis from the state and the federal, and sometimes they are delayed. And I can't remember, Heather, are we still having issues with recert, Medicaid recertifications?
It's gotten much better.
That's gotten better.
Where's that at, Jim?
Uh, receiv, the detail would not be there. The receivable, this balance itself, is on page two.
Yeah, we're on page two.
On page two of the statement, the file financial statement. And you'll see it right under cash and a cash equivalents. That's the area.
Oh, there's patient accounts receivable.
Patient accounts, I'm sorry, patient accounts receivable.
So, that's a million dollars?
Yes. It's much better than it was. Um, prior, two years ago, that balance was probably close to $2 million. There was a lot of actual, what's called a Medicaid pending. That's residents the facility takes in, which is typical for the industry, where they had not actually been qualified for Medicaid. And so, um, what typically a nursing home does is take in those resident, they make a quick assessment on whether or not they think the resident can qualify. They take the resident in because usually they need to get into a nursing home pretty quickly. So it's not like you have this whole time you can make decisions. And then, the family members, unfortunately, are the ones required to file all the paperwork. So the nursing home, all they can do is guide you through the process, but they can't actually do the filing for the resident. And so, there was quite a few, probably thirteen, at least, Medicaid pendings that were taken a couple of years ago. And a good majority of those never became eligible. So between seventeen and sixteen, probably about a million dollars receivables were written off.
So, uh, why are we taking the patients in if they can't afford it? Are we required by law to take in these patients?
No. What just typically happens is, um, well, there's a couple of factors. When, most of your referrals typically come from a hospital.
Sure.
And so, you're hoping the hospital's done part of its due diligence and that obviously, you're not the only nursing home that, that's being fed by that hospital. So basically, when a hospital calls you up to take in a resident, if you can't respond quickly, they just move to the next nursing home. So, again, based on the-
Do you think the nurse, the hospital is using us as a dumping ground? Where some of the other ones may not take these patients?
I can't answer that question. It's, it's possible. I mean, I, there is this-
You can or you won't?
I, I, well, I don't, I don't know for sure. I mean, I do, you know, I think it's not, I think everyone knows the hospital has an ownership in another nursing home. That's all I can say.
So, on this counts receivable, um, do you have a breakdown on the time on that? I mean, sixty days, hundred and twenty days, and stuff like that?
Not with me, but there are, there are balances, and I don't know if you have it on top of your head, but there, there are balances that are over a hundred and twenty days. It's been, when we finished up the audit for June 2018, the receivables were actually in a much better place than they had ever been.
I know we, I know we had contacted, um, one of our state senators about trying to get, um, you know, these counts receivable caught up. But it looks to me like, you know, our big issue here is, one of our big issues is counts receivable.
Correct.
Well, it's kind of like a rolling number over the years.
It is a rolling number.
It's almost part of the balance. You're gonna have that million in receivables every year.
Right.
I guess the real question is, and the real crux of it is, what you had said just a second ago, what is the percentage of receivables that we are writing off?
Right.
Every year? Do we know what that specific number is? Because that's the killer right there.
See, that's correct, John. The, the, the accounts receivable, uh, does not impact your operating profit and loss. What impacts your operating profit and loss are the receivables that you determine have to be written off.
Right.
So they're two entirely different numbers.
Right. And that's, that's what's-
Right.
That's what sends you down.
Right. And if, and the other document I gave you that looks like this, like a nursing home scorecard, if you go to the page that starts off with employee benefits, because it's a two-sided side, but if you go to the one where it says employee benefits, first census data and receivables, you'll see the facility's bad debt percentage. This was as of June 2017. The facility's bad debt percentage was almost five percent. The state as a whole, industry means the entire state of Maryland, with every Medicaid nursing home in the state, which is over 200 nursing homes, they were averaging below two percent. The region which you're in, which is basically the eastern shore in Cecil County, uh, they were actually lower than the state. And the county, which is all your competitors in Wacomico County, they were only at two and a half percent. So Wacomico's bad debt percentage, and that was the final year where we were, the management cleaned up the receivables and got themselves back into a healthy position again.
These patients that don't qualify, can't pay, what do we do with them?
You don't have many options. The best you can hope for is to issue a thirty-day discharge notice. If that stands and you are allowed to work on discharging the patient, then you essentially have to find another facility that will take a patient that they're not going to get paid for. As I've heard at every seminar I've attended of late, be careful who you take because you cannot get rid of them.
And that was my question, I guess.
Right. Yeah, you have to put them in a place of safety.
Yes.
So unless they can actually be discharged back to home, no other facility's gonna, especially not a nursing home. If they're not getting paid in your facility, they're not getting paid in any other facility. The only other way you can actually discharge a patient, but then you destroy your relationship with the hospital, is if they ever end up having to go back to the hospital. Anytime a patient leaves a facility, they're automatically discharged. It's just the way the rules work, and they're then admitted to the hospital. In theory, once the hospital admits them, you never have to bring them back to your facility. But if you do that a couple of times, the hospital will never refer anybody to you. So you gotta be really careful with relationships.
Darn if you do, darn if you don't.
Darn if you don't, yes.
Did, did, did you answer this question already? Um, or not answer it, but make the statement. Of the million dollars that's owed to us, how much do you think we are actually gonna collect out of that?
Yeah, the million, the bad debt, uh, hold on, bear with me for a minute. So right now, based on where we are, if you look on page eleven of that same set of financial statements, because we do, we don't do the same in-depth analysis as we do for the audit. But right now, if you look on page eleven where it says bad debt expense of the million dollars, we're only anticipating about $36,000 of it not being collected at this point.
So it gets us closer to the state average.
Right.
So.
But again, just as you, somebody else mentioned, I will tell you, in all my experience, in any healthcare environment, but more so in nursing homes, if you don't stay on top of your receivables and they start aging, the percentage of collections decreases pretty drastically.
Well, it seems, it seems, and I know it's tough trying to get the money, but it seems to me like the biggest problem we have is not collecting on our debts. If we didn't, if we collect, if we had what was owed to us, we wouldn't be here today.
Well, that's part of it, but really, the main driver here, which I think is one of the things we wanted to talk about today, is census. And so, one of the things, we've done some feasibility studies. When the facility was, you're a hundred and two-bed facility. When the facility was closer to ninety residents on an average, we were making a lot of money. Now we're down, somewhere averaging sometimes between seventy-one patients to seventy-five. When we're down that low, based on the current infrastructure, the, basically the personnel, we're actually losing money. So one of the others, so what we also did for the organization, so you'll see three, uh, reports in front of you, um, that say, based on seventy-five beds, based on eighty beds, and based on seventy beds. So if we actually start with the one that says, based on seventy-five beds in the upper left-hand corner, we could end up breaking even with, if we had on average seventy-five beds occupied, if there was about $415,000 worth of salary cuts. That's not including benefits. Heather and I and my staff went through a listing of all the employees to figure out which employee positions could be eliminated to get down. And that's how we came up with the four fifteen. And obviously, like anything else, and because of marketplace and whatever, you have to decide, A, cutting the staff will impact the quality of care that the residents are getting, which is one of the things you're noted for. B, if you start making people work harder because you're eliminating staff, will they, is there other places they can find jobs? And therefore, would you have issues retaining staff? And I will tell you, as I've seen elsewhere, if you end up having to bring in agency nursing because you can't fill a shift, that's probably three or four times what the cost of an actual salaried employee would be.
And you may take more risk.
And you could take more risk. So if you go to the eight, the eighty-bed analysis, which we've not been able to maintain, there, the, and the salary cuts would only be about $170,000. But that's where, that would, the only way we could do that minimal cut would be somehow or another, we figure out how to work the relationship with the hospital. There'd be more dollars into marketing to get people to come into facility. And probably the most critical thing, and I think it's something I know we need to talk about, because again, I, I do a lot of nursing homes. You gotta remember, and I've been through it personally with my, my own mother and my father-in-law, the resident's not the one who buys your facility, it's the loved ones, it's the responsible party. When you walk into Wacomico, it's very institutional-looking. You're already emotionally concerned that you're putting your loved one in a facility. So the people who end up getting residence more often is the ones that look like resorts or have these beautiful front, you know, con, uh, reception areas. But when you walk into Wacomico, you basically walk into a nursing station where you see the residents in wheelchairs, basically hanging around the front area, which is not appealing.
But when you talk to people in Wacomico County that have had people in nursing homes in Wacomico County, Wacomico County Nursing Home gets the highest regards.
And it does. Oh, yeah, it does. And that, and see, and that's the thing, is once they're in the facility, but that's the point. Once they're in the facility, I, I remember all indication, they're getting high-quality care and they're all happy. But it's the people who aren't in your facility and the people who are making the decisions. And like I said, it's not your residents, it's who, it's fun, the son, daughter, whatever.
Look should be an easy fix.
Right. Well, the problem is, and I'm gonna tell you based on other facilities I've seen, to really fix that facility and make it competitive, you're probably looking at $15 million, at least, to renovate that place.
Can we start from square one?
Yes.
I would like you walk in the door and, you know, this is, this is the company that owns this thing, and you tell us where it is.
Uh-huh.
And what the-
Sure.
-three different areas might be that we need to solve the problem.
Sure.
And how surmount, how easily it is to fix or insurmountable it might be.
Sure.
Okay.
Okay. So right now, obviously, where you are and where you've been for the past two years is you're losing money. And you cannot continue losing money. So one of the other documents I handed to you, which is a single sheet of paper, and it's a projection of, um, by month, for basically coming up with cash flow and cash flow needs. And you will notice-
Which sheet is that that you're looking at?
It's the single one that, just by itself.
I think that's what I gave you previously, John.
You sent us some, some Excel spreadsheets.
Yeah. It's the same projection.
You should have this.
Yeah.
So basically, at the end of September, which I've given you, the facility has $302,000 worth of cash. Part of the reason why they still had $300,000 some thousand dollars worth of cash at the end of September is because they have not paid the county for their share of the insurance bill, which is $210,000. Had that been paid, which I think was due in August, um, we would have been about $100,000. So if we continue to lose money, if we continue to lose money as we've been losing up until this point, uh, we're projecting, assuming we have to pay the 210, the facility pays the 210 in the month of, well, I guess now probably December. But if it was gonna pay it in November, you can see, if she paid that 210 in November, you would have no cash. Now fortunately, you'll have cash at the end of November because she still hasn't paid the $210,000. Once she pays that in December, again, we're gonna be in negative cash position. Which of course, the biggest issue is ma, meeting payroll.
We should have some income between now and then.
We'll have some, yeah, but we're, right now, we're projecting losses every month.
Part of the issue, uh, is, and I think I mentioned this, is, is that, is that the asset, uh, it's not only the way the asset lays out, but we only have six private rooms. And private rooms don't have bath facilities. As a matter of fact, virtually none of the rooms have bath facilities. And, and, and the norm in the mar, in the marketplace now is that, especially in private rooms or semi-private rooms, deuces, you've got bathroom facilities in the room where the patient can be cared for, bathed in that room. That's where a tremendous amount of expense will come in because you've gotta run all the necessary plumbing. Um, and, and, and that gets real, real costly, as you might imagine.
Now, you know, you said that the, we needed ninety to survive, and it's seventy-five, did you say?
We-
Low seventies.
Were in the low seventies. So basic, to, to, if we could, on average, release fiscal eighteen, June eighteen, they averaged about seventy-five residents a day.
So.
So we did an analysis based on seventy-five residents, figuring out, based on Heather's analysis of which position she could eliminate. So it's like, a couple nurses' age, a dietary person, housekeeping person, whatever. To, in a way to make sure we're not impairing the patient care and technically, hopefully, not necessarily overburding the staff. So in order to, if we could maintain, and that's the question, if we could maintain a minimum of seventy-five residents a day, you know, for the month, then we would need to make salary cuts to make this viable.
Everybody talks about how this nursing home, uh, is, um, is strongly needed in the community. We have to have it in the community. But, um, from what you're saying, it sounds like it's a nursing home that's not wanted, not wanted in the community because we can't fill the beds.
Well, again, a lot of the filling of the beds does come from the hospital source. And you only have one hospital, right, that you draw from? So you have-
The main draw.
Yeah, so there's basically three places a resident could come from. From the home, which means that would be how, you know, whether they know about Wacomico and again, what they see when they walk in the door. Uh, it could also come from assisted living facilities, if you have a relationship with them. But I will tell you, from experience, typically assisted living facilities tend to keep their residents longer than they should, as I personally know. And then the hospital.
And most nursing facilities, I don't know of one locally that isn't having census struggles.
Correct. And as, as a matter of fact, again, if you go back to the scorecard that I gave you, if you go back to that same side for census data, um, for the end of 2017, the average census for Wacomico facility was eighty-four percent. And the county itself, her, the competitors, was around eighty-four percent.
Well, if we told you that, that this was unacceptable and that we, you know, within six months, we wanted this number to be back up to ninety, what would have to be done?
To get residents up to ninety?
Yeah, what would have to be done? Or is it not even within our ability to-
I, I think the only, you can probably try to increase census to a certain extent by really trying to rebuild the relationship with the hospital, which I think prior to Heather's, uh, taking on this role, was not worked as, as it should be. Um, so I think that would bring some census up. But to bring it up to where you were talking about, I think you would have to make some actual infrastructure changes to the facility to make it competitive.
Uh, do you think that's the reason the hospital doesn't send them our way?
Well, didn't you just say the hospital got interested in other?
Yes.
So they're not gonna send you the best patients. They're gonna send you the ones that ain't paying. So the thing it is, is they gotta do a better marketing program in the county and you gotta start scrutinizing what they send. You gotta send them a better direction of how you're gonna send them to you. You gotta say, this is what's required. And if you know from a point that they're not gonna make their bill, you don't accept them like what they're doing to us. They're sending their best clients to their facility and sending the worst one to us.
Supposedly.
Supposedly.
You know it is. It's not supposed to, you don't know. Well, you know, you're gonna take care of your own first.
That's right.
Right.
Jim, if, it's interesting, if, if the county-wide nursing home census is at about eighty-four percent and we're at about eighty-four percent, does that indicate that there are too many beds in the marketplace?
Well, there, there is, the thing right now, I know that the state typically is not issuing a new certificates of need for additional beds, really almost anywhere in the state itself. Because one of the issues, and the other document I gave you, and you do not need to look at it now, but we do an annual benchmark study. Um, and the only thing I will point out to you, if you go to page, just bear with me for a minute. Yeah, if you go to page five of it called occupancy percentage, you will see for the entire state, occupancy percentage has actually been decreasing. And that's partly for all facilities in the state. And that's partly because, number one, and I think you probably see it here locally, but anywhere you drive now, there's an assisted living facility, whether it's somebody's home with two or three beds to bigger organizations, which they do a great job marketing. They're not actually cheap. Um, so what's happening is, people are going to assisted living over a nursing home because people still look at nursing homes as being an institution. And assisted living, they look at more of a house. The other thing that we've noticed is, there's more home care happening. There's, there's a lot of organizations out there now who will send a caregiver, caregiver, caregiver in, whether it's for a couple of hours a day to all day. Um, my, actually, we had that for a while for my father-in-law. So again, what we're finding is, and that's what my report talks about, there's so many other alternatives now to nursing homes that people are all, nursing home almost is becoming the last place of resort.
So in order to survive-
It's always been that way.
And what has.
First and foremost, the nursing home has to, um, reduce its numbers.
Right. The key, the key thing that has to happen right now, if census is gonna stay around where it is, between seventy-one to seventy-five percent, it's like any other business, right? The only thing you can control, since we can't really control the revenue per se, when we have a little bit of impact, is control costs.
Right.
The biggest cost you have in a nursing home is your personnel cost. You know, you don't really, can't really change the utilities that much, insurance is insurance and whatnot. And that's why when we did the feasibility studies, and there's a couple in here, the thing, the only thing we can cut is, is personnel. One of the requirements, and again, you have to look at this, and it's what one of you had mentioned about the high quality of care here, the state of Maryland requires that there's a minimum of two hours per day, per patient, nursing. And so what we did is, we took all your nursing hours, divided by your number of patients per day, and we came out to be about four hours a day.
We're about double.
So you're double what the state, now, that doesn't mean, now again, the state believes if you're two hours a day, you can provide enough, the proper quality of care. I'm not, I can't, I don't know that. That's not my, but I will tell you, I don't know of any facility out there that's at the two hours a day.
Well, if you know you're down to seventy-five, um, isn't it management's responsibility just to strictly downsize? Now, you're still gonna have some of the overhead costs that you can't get rid of.
Correct.
That's unfortunately, gonna stay with you.
Correct.
Uh, but you do recognize that you have to downsize.
Correct. And that's what we recommended.
But I mean, isn't that something that, it's been going on for a few years now, isn't that something that maybe someone is supposed to recognize? Do we have people like walking around the halls that aren't doing anything?
No.
No.
The acuity of patients continues to increase. The hospital sends them out more quickly than ever. You take your patients sicker.
Can you speak it to the mic?
Sure.
The acuity means that the patient's coming in or in worship. Thank you.
So, sorry.
Yeah, yeah. If you don't, if we ever say an acronym or something, just stop.
Um, so we're getting patients sooner in a more needy condition. The expectations are higher, both from the families and the patients as to, you know, we do have the best reputation. That is because we have more staff, you know? It's just a simple fact of the matter. As it is with the staff that I have, I still get complaints. People expect you to answer their call downs just like that. I, my fear is I cut staff, and as Jim already said, our reputation's gonna start to decline and our staff is not gonna stay put.
But, but the other side is, you can't continue the way you're operating.
Absolutely.
But the way you, the way you're saying it, saying it sounds like no, no nursing home could possibly stay in business. So there has to be something we're missing that would make this nursing home stay in business and be sustainable. And what is that?
I'm not disagreeing that there are probably some, some departments are easier to cut from than others. For instance, dietary, housekeeping, those were easy decisions to make with Jim. Nursing staff was a very rough call.
Sure.
I can't speak to the corporate world, but I know the Genesis's have so many more facilities they can eat some of these losses more readily than we can. I'm not sure what you see in the other facilities that you work with.
Well, the Genesis and any of the bigger chains, what they do is, they do have centralized business offices. So, you know, so instead of, you know, here, like every nursing facility has to have an administrator and every nursing facility has to have a director of nursing. And then obviously, you have to have the nurses and all the hands-on. But when you start getting into the actual non-essential or non-nursing staff, a lot of those places, and I know that's the fake case for Genesis, you know, you have a business office person and a billing person and somebody who deals with payroll and HR. They'll, they're gonna do that in the corporate office. So again, you know, and so if you figure, if you own five facilities independently, there's five of those positions, five business office managers, five billers minimum, and five HR people. If you're in a Genesis, you might have, you know, one business office manager, two billers, one HR person. Well, you just cut a lot of salary out of that equation.
Sounds like we're like a country store competing against a Walmart. Is that it?
I mean, part of it is, and I've tried, and I, and I, and I can't-
We're competing against franchises.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's scale. We don't have scale.
Scale, right. And it depends. Like I just came from a meeting this morning, and they are very fortunate. They have this huge foundation and they actually operate at a $3 million loss every year. They make $11 million in their foundation, so they can afford to make, lose $3 million and have the great reputation they have. But when you're standalone, and it's like I said, and I deal with a lot of different types of not-for-profits, not just healthcare, it's like anything else, you're a business. If you don't, if you can't, if you don't have money in the checkbook, you gotta do something about it. And the thing is, if you're gonna stay in business, unless we can get census up, which I don't count on, I hope it happens at some point in time, but you gotta cut costs. And you're just gonna have to manage your staff, you're gonna have to work through it. You may lose some employees, you know, might have some pain for a while You may lose some employees, you know, might have some pain for a while because you may have some agency nursing in the interim. But like anything else, and like every other facility out there, you gotta, you gotta make some hard decisions. And I think the, the main issue that we've had is, and I've been trying to stress this for a while, is sometimes you have to deal with the pain today to resolve the problem of the future. And right now, we just have a pain that keeps continuing.
So Jim, the, so the operating losses, if you will, we can mitigate those to some extent by reduction in staff.
Correct.
That, that flips out of that coin, maybe jeopardizing to some degree the level of care. But if you're taking a long-term, a longer-term view of this asset, of this business, one of the significant deficiencies, if you will, is that the asset's not positioned well for today's marketplace. So then you've got to, if, if you're gonna say, we wanna, if we make the decision that we wanna reduce our expenses, that, to me, isn't a long-term solution because you've also gotta make the decision that you're willing to make the investment in the asset that needs to be made so that it's positioned in the marketplace for the long haul. So as you said, John, you know, if we're a country store and right up the street is a, is a new fancy, modern place, people buy with their eyes, you, you can't compete in most cases over the long term if you're fighting that battle. So from my standpoint, and, and I see the nursing home, you know, as an asset in this community. It does a lot of great things for a lot of families. But I wouldn't, I would never suggest that we simply take cost reduction measures if we're not willing to make the capital investment that needs to be made over the long term for the facility. Now, we could put that together for you. I don't know how long that would take, but we could put that together for you. I'm really here, or we're here today to talk about operating the asset, having sufficient cash flow to continue to operate while we make a decision as to our longer-term commitment to the facility and, and to that particular industry. It's an industry that, you know, the county should be in, or should it be privatized?
Okay.
And that's the real question in my mind.
You know, we're here today, I see, by, by our agenda for looking to put in an infusion of money into the nursing home, okay? To keep, keep things going, okay? But there's some things that I've, I've sitting here thinking about. You mentioned payroll and HR. Do you operate that? Is that something that could be taken over by the county?
We've discussed that. I'll let Heather answer.
Well, let me, let me go through the rest, okay? So I don't lose my train of thought here. That, that's one thing. Another thing is you keep talking about these larger nursing homes and all the, you know, they have to make money. Most of them have debt, not, not, not just the insurance and, you know, the payroll. They borrowed money. They probably owe millions of dollars on the buildings.
Right.
We don't have that.
Correct.
So that's one advantage we have. Another thing is, of course, we talked about accounts receivable. I think there ought to be, you know, some kind of action taken to try to get those in. Marketing the nursing home has not been done. I mean, I think a marketing program would be wonderful for that nursing home. And like you say, it's the people that are, it's not the people that are going, it's the families. And, you know, all of our other, not all, maybe not all, but most of our other departments are, you know, like our, you know, our airport and such have commissions, people to help guide. And I would suggest that.
Advisory boards.
An advisory board put together for this nursing home would, you know, the aspects of trying to make sure it stays there. Not somebody that wants to go in there and get it closed. I know we've had issues before with, with that. And I think you're gonna have a neighborhood and quite a, quite a few people is not gonna be happy if the thoughts head in that direction. But I think an advisory board would be excellent, something like the SWEAT Board or the Airport Commission, what, what other ones? The Liquor Board, we have, you know, commissions, you know, to show some, show some direction of where we need to go with this.
Which is all well and good, but that's all based on the premise that the county wants to act like a private enterprise and grow the nursing.
I'm not saying grow it. I'm saying save it.
Or even, well, either way, turn it around.
We're, we're in, we're in the liquor business too, you know?
We shouldn't be. Yeah, well, so I guess the question is, can, you know, with what Joe's concerns are here, are those issues that could be or might be, should be better addressed by a private, a private enterprise, a private entity that could then worry about branding and worry about everything else with the experience they bring throughout the country? And would that be more beneficial to the citizens of Wycomico County? Because everybody's so concerned, if the county doesn't keep this, we're gonna lose a great asset. I'm wondering if the county unloads it, that we end up with a better asset because we'll, we'll be turning it over to people that can better manage it.
Right.
So what's the, what, what's your perspective?
And you can, and actually, I have a client that actually has been purchasing different facilities throughout the state. As a matter of fact, they purchased the facility from Frederick County, and of course, then Frederick County decided they wanted to be back in the business, so they bought it back again, which is interesting, but that's a whole nother political thing.
I'd like to see some stories on that.
Yeah, but, but my client still manages it.
Yeah.
And, you know, one of the things I will tell you, because, I mean, that's what they do, and they tend to buy facilities that, you know, are struggling. And typically, that way, they, they can buy them a little bit cheaper. But one of the first things I can tell you they're gonna do is they're gonna cut staff. They're gonna make it profitable first and then figure out the ramifications later.
Well, we have to do that anyway.
And that's what you need to do. And that's one of the things I think that, for some reason, we've been very hesitant to do. And the way I look at it is, you have two choices. You make some hard decisions today and keep the facility running, or eventually you're gonna go bankrupt and everyone's gonna lose their job.
You need to cut staff if you don't increase beds.
Right. And the thing is, I mean, again, you're gonna have pain, you're gonna have employees who are upset, you're gonna have employees have to work a little harder. I would hope for the most part, quality of care would not diminish so drastically. You know, there's always that possibility, but, you know, other facilities do it. I mean, you know, you're, you do run high. I mean, again, if you go back to the scorecard and you look under total expenditures on the revenue expense side, you know, you're averaging two hundred and fifty-seven dollars a day. And Wayne mentioned this earlier, but if you go to the very top, because you have a, what do you have, eighteen quads? How many quads do you have? Sixteen quads. So there, so there are four, four beds in a room with no bathroom facility, so no privacy. So they're not even semi-private. And if you look up on the very top line, your average private revenue, which private's not the, we don't have as many private pay in any facility anymore, but you see, your average because of the quads, you're only getting a hundred and seventy-four dollars a day. Your competitors in the county are getting two hundred and sixty dollars a day. Well, a hundred and seventy dollars a day is not covering two hundred and fifty-seven dollars a day in costs in any way, shape, or form.
And the quads really impact what I'll call your logistics. Because, okay, if this patient needs to be bathed, if this patient needs the restroom facilities, they've gotta be transported as opposed to being cared for immediately in, in the space that they're occupying. So the, the, in listening to what council is saying, my suggestion would be this, and this is just my suggestion. We certainly know that we need to make the cash infusion because we wanna keep operating until we make the longer-term decision. I think for the council and the executive to make that longer-term decision, we really have to take a very hard look at what are the asset needs? How much money would have to be invested to reposition this facility? So we could change our mix because we don't have much in the way of private pay. And I believe that quite a bit of that has to do with the facility itself. To Joe's point, a lot of private pay facilities have debt, but that debt was taken on in order to invest in the facility. So we haven't borrowed money, we have no debt, but we haven't invested in the facility. So I think it would be helpful to council, if you had a better handle on, look, what investment in the facility would it take to reposition it in the marketplace? And then have a business plan for, okay, in repositioning it, to Joe's point again, how would we market it? How would we handle, if you will, the, 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 the business aspects of how it operates? Separate that from the patient care, but from a business standpoint. We have an ad right now that runs on one of the stations. I see it almost every night. It, 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 it's not a, it's not a great ad. It's not an ad that would compel me to take my loved one to that nursing home. As a matter of fact, I think in some respects, it works against us because you see the facility, you see how dated the facility is. So we really need a business plan if we wanna commit to the asset long-term. And I'm not arguing against that. I'm just saying that I think for council to make a good fiscal decision, I really think we need a bit more information. And we need to put together, what is that, and what does that investment look like? How would that money get spent? And how much is it? And how much P and I, principal and interest, would that add to the, to the, to, to the operation if we were to continue to operate it as an enterprise? Or how much would it add to the county's general fund principal and interest load? So, and I don't know how long it would take us to put that together.
Right. And the other thing you, in, in doing, looking at the infrastructure, the actual structure of the place, one of the other things you probably wanna look at is potentially converting some of the nursing facility into an assisted living facility. Assisted living definitely is much more profitable as far as the rates you can charge. And because we are seeing census dropping, now, again, ten years from now, five years from now, census might go back up again. But right now, the trend over the past probably eight, nine years has been census has been dropping in all the facilities because of all the alternatives. But we all know there is the aging population, and at some point in time, they're gonna have to have a place to go. But in my opinion, you gotta, I think you, you gotta, these are, this is how I look at it. A, you gotta put money in this organization, it's gonna run out of money at some point in time. That's number one. Number two is, you're not selling this tomorrow, no matter, you know, whatever, if you decide to sell it, it's not happening right away, I don't believe. So in my opinion, and again, it's up to you and, and your direction to management, I think you need to make these personnel changes to, to keep you afloat. Otherwise, you're gonna constantly be putting money into this until you decide what you wanna do. Then the third thing, which is what Wayne alluded to, is either A, investing in the, the bricks and sticks, as we wanna call it, to make it a more viable location where people would wanna come to the facility, or you put it up for market and find a seller, a buyer, to sell it. That, to me, that's, that's the flow you have right now, unless you wanna close it down tomorrow.
Because if we don't do anything, Wayne, essentially, looking at the numbers, you're gonna be back every three months to us asking for four hundred thousand or so.
Correct.
And that's.
That's likely.
Yeah, I mean, and that's not really a sustainable thing for us to do. And, you know, let's say that that's the path we go down, and we hit another recession where all of a sudden the county doesn't have money, then we're at a situation where that four hundred thousand is all of a sudden needed for other things. And, you know, that would be really catastrophic. We don't have a plan to, you know, we, we can't keep deficit financing this nursing home. You know, because if, if something happens and our revenue drops dramatically, that's gonna be, you know, one of the places we have to look at it cutting. And if there's no plan to deal with that long term, that could be really catastrophic.
I mean, it, 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 you know, unless we take those steps, we're fighting a rear guard action, and that's never a good place to be.
Well, business is always criticized for not running government, government's always criticized for not running business like, the government like a business. And this is a classic example.
You know, the, the thing of it is, is we've got it, but we ought to make what we have work. And I don't think, basically, there's been enough emphasis in trying to, I mean, if we're charging, would, would you say we were charging less than seventy or eighty dollars a day, less than other?
For private, because again, they're, they, those, I don't know, I haven't been to the Genesis, but I'm, it's either private rooms or semi-private. They, obviously, you can charge more for those. You cannot charge two hundred and fifty dollars a day to somebody that's sleeping in a room with three other people.
Yeah.
With no bathroom.
Right.
Most of those patients are bedridden anyway, so they don't need a bathroom.
So the, when you, but there's a bathing facilities, I mean, the bathing facilities is down the hall.
How do you bathe them now?
Take them down the hall to a shower.
Take them down the hall.
Yeah, so it's, so it's kinda down the hall, around the corner.
That's the logistic aspect I was talking about.
I've always seen bird baths where they bring the water to you.
Yes, the majority of it, they get a shower.
Majority, there you go.
But, but if people can, you know, spend a little bit, you know, spend more, and the facility has nicer, I mean, they're gonna choose that facility.
They are.
They're not gonna come to the Wycomico facility because, you know, it's nicer.
If, if the majority of your pay, payments aren't private, so it's what Medicaid is paying?
Medicaid rebovers.
Well, why, why is Medicaid choosing a higher, a higher-cost nursing home in the area instead of Wycomico?
Well, you gotta remember, Medicaid pays the same price for every facility, other than what's on their case, on their acuity level.
Okay.
So Genesis, yeah, the only difference between Genesis and Wycomico is, is depending on the acuity of their patients. Pretty much everything else is equal. The way, just so you know how it works for Medicaid now, Medicaid pays by region, so every facility in the region. So it doesn't matter whether they're in Wycomico County, Worcester County, Rochester, wherever.
What does Medicaid pay for a day now?
Well, right now, what you were get, what you were getting, this was a year ago, and I think it went up about three percent. You were getting about two hundred and thirty, two hundred and forty dollars a day.
That's what I'll say here.
So everyone's getting that?
Yes. And there, and there's a little bit of deviation, deviation. So if you're like a for-profit and you pay real estate taxes, they'll pay part of that. But for the most part, everyone in a region's being paid the same. Except for the acuity. So that, the acuity side of your resident population is the only real factor that changes between facilities. So everybody in that region, and unfortunately, you're in this huge region. So it's, like I said, it's Cecil County, it's actually, my book, it tells you what the regions are. But I think it's like Cecil County, it's all of eastern shore.
Right.
So everybody in this area is getting paid. So, you know, if you're in a county where salaries, you know, less than it is in another county, you're gonna benefit because, you know, you've got less costs.
But the key there, to go back to what Joe said and Ernie said, the key there is the initial referrals.
Right.
Well, you gotta get them there.
Well, like I said, if you, and we've seen it, I mean, prior to, and I guess that's one of the things that Heather's predecessor really wasn't paying attention to, was the fact that census was dropping historically through all the industry. I think there was an attempt to try to keep that occupancy up, which is why we ended up taking all these residents that we call Medicaid pending. Medicaid pending mean you've taken a resident that can't pay you privately, and you're hoping that they will qualify for Medicaid. So what happens is, is we found out, you had patients in there for eighteen months that you weren't getting paid for, many of which you never got paid for.
But there wasn't that many of them, you said, it was?
Well, there was about thirteen to sixteen. The only reason some of that pain, or the bleeding, as we like to call it, stopped is because, and I hate to say it this way, either the patient ceased or they actually went to the hospital and had to go to some other place for some reason.
Well, how, how does it? So Medicaid is based on poverty, essentially, for nursing homes, is that right? You have it spin down your assets.
Yeah, you can only have like twenty-five hundred, you can only have like twenty-five hundred dollars in assets.
Yeah, so how, so if they can't pay privately, how do they, how do they, how are they able not to pay privately? Which, you know, they don't, if they don't qualify for Medicaid, that assumes that they have assets.
I'll give you a couple examples. Yeah, they can, they can have a piece of land somewhere that can't be sold, but the state's determined it's worth five thousand dollars, which we've had. There was one of your patients had land down in North Carolina. State decided the thing was worth more than twenty-five hundred dollars and would never pay us. Okay? We've also had patients here and elsewhere where some nephew, niece, well, usually it's a nephew, stole money. And because of that, the patient never became eligible.
You mean stole money?
Actually stole money from the res, from their relative. Stole like their pension checks, stole their assets, took money out of their savings accounts. And what happens is, when you, when you qualify, when you apply for Medicaid, you have, at one time, you had to give all five years of all your bank statements. Now they pick six randomly out of that. If they see a withdrawal out of that bank statement that you can't explain why you took the money out, like paying for health insurance or something, they automatically assume that you were trying to give your, either A, divert it to another family member so you would become eligible, which is obviously not appropriate, or somebody actually stole the money and they could, and they hold that against you.
Well, that's when.
Medicaid program is not the easiest always to get into. And the real problem is, and we've told all our clients this, and, and I think you've tried to do this, but had a period of time where that employee's no longer with you, you have to stay behind the family member. You can't apply for the resident because you don't have access to their bank statements, you don't have access to that information. You have, you have to let the resident, the family member know, the responsible party. You have, which I think you have and others do, you have to prepare a checklist for them of everything they need to pull together to be qualified to actually apply for Medicaid. If you don't have all those documents there, you can miss one document, Medicaid will just put you on the back burner. And then there's a period of time that if you don't stay on top of that, they will, even if you become eligible, say, somewhere down the road, they won't pay you back to the first time you brought the resident in because there, there's statute of limitation time periods. So if a family member is being, because remember, as Heather said, once a resident's in your facility, you cannot basically discharge them. It's almost impossible. So again, if a family member just, you know, say, I don't remember the rules at the moment, but say with, you don't have to, you have to put everything in within four months, and the family member just doesn't do it, and finally puts it in the fifth or sixth month, they won't pay you for the first four months that they were there. So you provided services, right, incurred costs, but you're getting no revenue.
So who's the responsible party?
It could be husband, wife, child.
So aren't they responsible for the bill?
Right, could be an attorney if it's under some.
They're not responsible for the bill.
Not in Maryland.
No.
So do you use a collection agency?
We haven't as of this point.
Why?
Well, it's.
I know, did, if you get an ambulance bill from someone there and you don't pay, you're gonna go to a collection agency?
Sure. In most cases, and I can't speak, obviously, for every case. Because you can't hold the family member accountable, the money is just not there. So you hire a collection agency, but there's no money to collect.
They, they work on commission, so it'd be their problem.
We can, we can explore that. That can be something to explore.
It does, and I'll tell you from personal experience, it's not been that successful. Because usually if they are Medicaid.
There's a lot of collections that you can see out there.
Oh, there are, there are. And you're right, they do work on commission. I mean, there's no harm in trying to do that. I don't, I don't think it's gonna solve your problem.
So Wayne, we've got in here that they need four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. Is that coming out of contingency or?
Uh, no, I would, I would, I would structure it as a loan from the general fund, Joe.
Uh-huh. Do it as a loan?
I wouldn't take it from contingency at this point. I'd structure it as a loan.
What do we have in the cap? I couldn't find anything in the CIP. What do we have?
For the nursing home?
Yeah. We don't have anything, but we know.
No, I, I take that back, John. We had replacing all the PTAC units.
That's right, yes.
It was four hundred, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I think. And that's, we're, we're in the midst of culling that together with the contract.
Is that for this period or was it spread out over two?
That's for this year.
Just for this year?
That's for this year. So we have that in the capital budget.
Was there anything in the following years?
Not, not as of this point. Because I was looking at, okay, if, if we're gonna begin to make meaningful investments in the nursing home, we should really, we know we have to replace the PTAC units in order to keep it operating. We know we have to replace the P-TAC units in order to keep it operating properly. Because the patient's rooms have to be heated and air conditioned. But when you begin to think about, okay, how do we prioritize our spending, our capital investment at the nursing home? I think we really need to take a very comprehensive look at that facility. We don't have anyone in-house who's really competent to do that. I'd have to outsource, um, that, that, that exercise to a consultant. And I don't know how long it would take or how much money it would cost. Jim may know.
Could we take the revenue from somewhere else? Like from the liquor, who's profiting making money at the liquor board?
I mean, we can earmark, I mean, we can earmark any revenue that we want to.
To send that to the nursing home?
It's all coming, it's all general fund.
It still comes out of the general fund.
Market it as the money that they're making profit on, that we could earmark that for the nursing home.
You could, Ernie, you could, Ernie, but, um, I guess the question comes down to, why would, why would we wanna take the, the money? From, whether, whether we earmark it from the civic center or we earmark it from the liquor, liquor. Why would we want to set up a, a, a process where we are, we divert income to the county? To a nursing home, knowing that we are subsidizing nursing every single year. We're in an operation that's losing.
subsidizing until we, talking about restructuring.
Well, yeah.
Till we can do that, till we restructure.
That, that's, that's an interesting thing Ernie just brought up though. You know, there was a referendum in the election about. Money coming from gambling proceeds and the state going to education. You know, if we took the money that, I think it's six hundred and some thousand that this year we're getting from the liquor dispensary, is that correct?
That always gets up high.
It's up in, yeah, whatever. Yeah, that's right, there you go. Anyway, you know, I know there's been a, there's been a, a push over the years that we shouldn't be in the liquor business. Like, we shouldn't be in the nursing home business. If you took that money and you earmarked it toward the nursing home. And you marketed it. And use it in a marketing program at the liquor dispensary as, you know, you're subsidizing or helping or working toward. Supporting the Wycomico County nursing home.
Drinking towards.
Yeah, that's right. It might, it might, it, it might increase the revenues at the liquor, liquor dispensary. And it would also put a better spin on us being in the liquor business and possibly, you know, work to our advantage.
I mean, I'm open to, I'm open to all kinds of ideas.
It's a good idea.
We, I think we collectively, A, don't know yet what the overall investment is that's needed. And I think we have to get some pretty good information on that as quickly as we can, see whether or not we've got a, an appetite for that. To your point, Joe, we could say, well, you know, let's be optimistic and say, well, it's gonna cost ten million dollars. In capital investment. We could then, if we wanted to, we could say, we're gonna earmark. The funding stream for that loan is gonna be our proceeds from the dispensary, and that's gonna cover hopefully our PNI. So we could go through that exercise, but I think we need to know what level of investment is really gonna reposition the asset. Because I, I still go back to that and say, if we don't reposition the asset, we're gonna continue to fight a rear guard action.
And it's good and well to say, okay, we're gonna earmark the six hundred thousand from the liquor to go to the nursing home. But what you're really doing is you're taking two hundred from education, you're taking two hundred from roads, you're taking two hundred from public safety. Because that's where that money from the liquor store, from the liquor dispensary is going.
We don't, we don't give two hundred from the liquor store to the board of that.
It goes to the general fund.
It goes to the general fund.
Which funds education, roads.
Six hundred thousand, if, if you split it up in the whole scheme of things, it's not two hundred thousand to those three entities.
I know it isn't. It's going to the general fund, which, which supports those groups. So you're not really just saying, we're gonna take it from the liquor control and we're gonna give it to the nursing home. No, you're not. It takes from the general fund.
You're taking it from the general fund.
That's really what's happening. You can call it an earmark, but it's coming from the general fund.
You know, it's like Wayne using the number ten million. Sorry about this, we do spiral a little bit.
No, it's okay.
But, you know, he's saying, he's saying ten million, you know, nobody else has mentioned spending ten million dollars on the nursing home. And you're saying, take two hundred thousand dollars away from education or roads. That's not correct either, in, in the scheme of things. Because it's, you're not taking two hundred thousand, that's six hundred thousand is going into a hundred and thirty million dollar budget, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, recurring, yeah, general fund recurring.
Right.
But whatever you, whatever you give, whatever you're investing in the nursing home, it's still coming out of the general fund.
What I'm saying is.
If you wanna call it an earmark.
What I'm saying, what Ernie said.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, it's, it's an interesting idea, and you use it as a marketing tool at the liquor dispensary. You know, every, there's a lot of people in this county that says, we shouldn't be in the liquor business. I'm probably one of them. You know, that, you know, it should be a private enterprise. There's never been any appetite to get us out of the liquor business, you know. I think we've even appointed some commissioners, haven't we Bob, over the years, that went in there guns blazing, we're gonna get rid of this liquor dispensary. And once they got there and seen what was going on, they changed their mind. So if we're not, if we're not, you know, if, if. Consensus of the county is, citizens, some of them think we shouldn't be there, let's make it look like it's doing something more than just selling liquor. Let's make it look like it's supporting something that the county is doing.
As long as it's not supporting what is a sinking ship.
Well, it's sinking down until we do the restructuring. You're, you're making it seem like they're, we're just gonna dump this six hundred thousand dollars into it, and that's it. He's talking about restructuring. We're gonna put this money in there, hopefully restructure, that it can come above, that it can survive on its own. You're not giving it a chance.
Well, which circles back around again to what Joe had said earlier, and, and Joe, the discussion Joe and I had earlier. Why do we want to circle around to bring this back to where it should be? If a private enterprise can do it faster and do it better and do it cheaper?
Who said that that's gonna happen? But in the meantime, we gotta do something with this facility. We just can't sit there and go put a for sale sign in it tomorrow and wait for somebody to buy it.
Well, I, I mean, there's already a really good chance this forty-nine is gonna be approved. It's a great chance that this P-TAC unit.
P-TAC unit.
Is gonna be approved. That's, that's, that's okay. But then we have the year after that and year after that. In the interim, I think what the purpose here is to decide. How many four hundred thousands, how many millions are we gonna invest every single year? How many of the years is it gonna take and what's the number it's gonna add up to, to break it even? Or is it better, and I honestly, is it better and more efficient and better for the community to turn it over to somebody now? We don't know that. Because they have more resources than we do.
We don't know that.
If you, well, we don't, but that's why they're here today. If we ha, if we turn this over to a multi-million dollar company tomorrow, they already have the cash to infuse.
Do we know that? They just said all of them.
That's why they're here.
He said they're already, they're in trouble too.
Well, that's why they're here today, is to give us that perspective.
That, to sell it? I didn't hear him say sell it.
No, I'm saying, that's what they're here for, is to give us that perspective on what the options are. And if we were to sell it.
Saying selling it. We, we haven't even took into the options yet. They're talking about restructuring and stuff, and you haven't given that a chance. You're still saying sell it.
No, well, the reason I'm saying that is because they've, they've explained to us before that there are businesses, there are companies across the United States, Ernie, that are making this work.
But we haven't even given a chance.
If they can make it work, I'm pretty sure we can make it work.
Why should we? Why should we be in the business?
When's the last time that we had? When's the last time?
Open up a bank across the street?
We're not in that business.
We could be in the, we could get in.
Inherited this. The council, we inherited this.
It doesn't obligate us to, obligates us to keep.
We didn't inherit a bank.
It's not benefiting the citizens whether we own it or whether.
Okay, let me ask you this. When's the last time that's been remodeling, reconstruction into the facility? So they haven't took an interest into this place. Somebody need to take an interest into it.
Why, why is that our, why?
Well, I've said it many times, I don't know why, that's our responsibility.
I know too, because the fifteen million that Timmy said, that's, that's to bring it up to standard with over all the new part. We still are looking at over a million dollars right now to bring it up to, to date, to P-Tacs, the roof. We've got an old furnace outside that air conditioned. All those big things are getting ready to go up right now. We've got a million dollars we've gotta spend if we keep this. Any more than, you know, next spring. Because it's that, it's that dilapidated now.
When, when is the last time that the county infused money into the nursing home?
Not during my.
Okay, it's been a long, long time.
And there was, there was renovations and additions to the nursing home, but it was taken out through a loan, so the county didn't fund it at all.
So the county didn't fund it at all.
Yeah.
And that loan's been retired.
And I think, and Heather reminded me, I think it was somewhere in the nineties, that's where, that's where we now have the wing of private rooms.
Well, that was, that was initial, that was in, say, the seventies, and then we did the rehab hallway in the nineties.
That's the rehab. So that's when they're, but when they did that though, they took out a loan, a couple, four or five million dollar loan, which they paid off. The one thing you gotta remember, I, I don't know, I don't know what happened to the facility before the nineties. But from that point until today, the nursing home is always, other than whatever you done for capital, which I don't know all of that, has been self-sufficient.
Correct.
So it's made money. And it's, and again, it's because it, you know, of the hundred and two beds, it probably had, it probably filled about ninety-five to ninety-eight percent. Ninety-five to ninety-eight of those hundred and two beds. And again, it's like anything else, you know, you can ha, if, if. If we brought, if right now, I don't believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, if somehow or another we went from seventy-one beds to eighty-five beds tomorrow. I don't think she's be, she's not hiring anybody else. Well, if you suddenly add fourteen more people, that revenue stream and no additional cost, which I believe would be the case, that's where you'd be making money again. So the problem is, because we don't know how to get census up and it's not gonna happen tomorrow, the only other choice you have as a business is to drop costs.
So you're being, go ahead, Mark, I've interrupted you for like some sort.
I think to Ernie's point, we, there is probably a need to, you know, figure out what we can do about this. For the, I think we owe that to the community, you know, get a plan together, see how much it's gonna cost, we make that sort of determination. But it can't be, we can't keep going down this path from a county's perspective of, you know, one point two million dollars over a year, every year, probably growing. Year after year. So, you know, I think there's a middle ground between, between Ernie and John probably. Of, let's figure it out, let's, let's go along as it is for now, but recognize this, we can't do this forever. We can't do this indefinitely.
I would think that, I would think that my, my personal goal would be. To be able to present something to council in the budget cycle that would enable you to make that kind of decision.
And we'll, we'll probably have to do that, but not to put you on the spot, Mr. Chris, but maybe to alleviate some of, uh, Mr. Davis's concerns. Is it, could you state at this point in time that there could possibly be a company that could come in within the next year? Purchase this from Wycomico County and run it as efficiently or more efficiently as Wycomico County is running it? Or would it be a detriment to this community to, to do that?
Well, all I can say is I do know there's been a lot of sales and purchases in the state of Maryland, including my own client who recently purchased two facilities.
Right.
And have per, and been able to turn them around. I know for, I know for a fact, I don't know the group, but there's another group that purchased Readers. And Forest Village, Readers apparently was being, gonna be ready to be shut down by the count, by the state.
Right.
Now, they just purchased it, so I can't tell you they're gonna be successful, but obviously there were buyers out there who thought they could.
Does that compromise the care and the ability of the community to have access?
No, let me, let me explain something to you. So, there's two, two elements here. A, number one is, there's a minimum number of hours per day that every facility has to maintain, or there, they, there's huge penalties and the state would shut them down. The second thing, every nursing home in the state of Maryland is, is, is given an annual survey. And the survey's pretty brutal, as you know, um, you've been pretty fortunate. But anyway, there's an annual survey that comes in, it looks at everything. From food temperature to beds cleanliness or whatever. So nursing homes are monitored on, on a very strict level. And it's always a surprise survey. In addition however, or in addition to that, is if any resident or responsible party. Complains about a nursing home to the state, they instantly come back in and survey you again. So there's a lot of scrutiny over nursing homes. Probably, I mean, I'm sure hospitals are the same, but I know in a nursing home, not, unlike assisted living where there's not the scrutiny they should have. Nursing homes really are monitored. So if a facility is not providing proper quality of care, A, they're gonna get penalized. I have had a couple clients who, for some, some very small infraction, have paid over a half a million dollars to the state as a penalty for one small infraction. Okay? And if they don't maintain the facility at the highest level that they, you know, with good quality care, they would be shut down.
Because I think the crux of this is the fact that there, this community, there's members of this community that are so concerned that the county were to turn this over to a private enterprise. That, uh, uh, you know, it would alienate, uh, it would alienate certain individuals who could otherwise be, um, qualified to go. It would, I don't think that would be the case.
No.
So accessibility wouldn't, wouldn't change, and quality of service wouldn't change.
No. No, I don't.
I don't say that as an argument, I say that, Ernie, to kind of alleviate the concerns that people have, that, that they're attached to this.
It's just like any other thing. I mean, he's sitting there saying that you don't know if they take over, he said, one, so they could close, you don't know that.
He does, I mean, in a sense he does know, because he knows objectively how the industry is.
And he also know he's working for a client that buying nursing homes. I don't think he's compromised.
No, I'm, no, I'm not. I've never even talked to them about it.
Yeah. But my thing is, you're not giving us a chance. You're just still saying sell, sell, sell. We ain't said, you know, come up with a plan or something. You're not even giving them a chance. You wanna just sell it.
Well, I'm opening up to all perspectives, okay? And that's my perspective. I, I appreciate yours too, and, and we're gonna make that decision as a body.
Oh, you don't doubt?
You know, yeah. I'm okay with that.
Well, I think Larry could share a little history about how it went the last time.
That's exactly right.
Started out.
See you later.
We're down to four now.
Almost lost a quorum.
But anyway, um, I think it's gonna be, um, you know, a pretty tough decision, and I, I think we need to explore. And I would recommend that maybe the county executive's office do think about putting together a committee. To work on this nursing home problem. I think that would be.
I think it's a good idea, Joe.
You know.
I like that.
But if we spend money here, you're gonna have to talk to the school board too. We've only got so much money to spend building new schools.
John said that a while ago, we understand that. You know, um, most of those school board people are old like I am, you know, they're somewhere to hang out later on.
I mean, that, that one point two million dollars every year, I mean, that's money we can't spend on drainage. I mean, it's, I mean, it is, you know.
It's huge numbers. And, and there's such, they're always not keep beating us dead horses. There's such a misnomer that for the county to release this, it's gonna be a disaster to the community. And I don't think that's a reality. I think it'll be, could be a plus. And you're the experts, we're not the experts.
And again, I, I honestly don't wanna see sales, get the wrong impression, but there used to be, I can't say every county owned a nursing home. But most counties in the state owned a nursing home, there's only two left.
Right.
And one did sell, but when the county executive changed, for some reason, that county executive decided that was a mistake. Plus their nursing home is like in the middle of their entire government complex, whereas yours is not in the same area. So that could have been part of it. But some reason or other, and like I said, my client had purchased, before they were my client. Uh, purchased the facility in Fredericks County, so you were the only facility left.
I think it changed in the fifty years since this place. So, I mean, just like our car's seat belts now, we didn't have seat belts when we were growing up. And who knows what's gonna be, if we spend fifteen million dollars ten years from now. With this Affordable Care Act, we don't know where we're gonna be.
Well, it sounds to me like we've got a big disconnect here in getting paid for some reason or another. You know, from the federal government or the state or whoever pays us.
That we have no control over.
Well, you, you do. You don't have a control over it, but you can certainly bang on enough doors.
That's right.
And I know before when we stepped up, I think, who'd we go to? Andy Harris or Jimathias or somebody?
Also going to the state legislature too, you know.
And maybe we need to put more pressure on that, you know, to sit out here and look at a million dollars account receivable. And saying we're having to put half a million dollars in to keep the doors open. You know, and the little business I ran years ago, little country store business, we had store accounts when things started. I couldn't pay my payroll, I'd get on the phone, call the folks up that owed me money and say, hey, look, bring me a check. Now, I know it's a lot more complicated than that, um, you know, but. It's, it's, it's something that I think we need to, um, pay more attention to.
Well, but on the accounts receivable, aren't you expecting, don't, your financial statement say you're gonna collect all of that except thirty-six thousand dollars? So it's only like thirty-six, thirty-six thousand dollars that is.
But they've got more, they've got it out there longer than thirty-nine and a half.
Right, I mean, that's, that balance will go up, but not, hopefully it's not.
They'll continue to have expenses during that time.
Yeah, but, but if you look at it, it's.
It doesn't change the cost.
It, it's not, it's not the, it's not the government revenue, if you look at the per person expenses. It's really the private revenue where we're getting a hundred and seventy-four, and industry's getting three hundred and ninety-four dollars. It's the, it's the over two hundred dollars per person per day, if I read that right, that the industry is receiving for private revenue.
And that has to do with assets.
Yeah, and if you look at our, our private mix is a lot higher than the industry average private mix. So, I mean, we're, we got more private people paying a lot less money per person. Than the industry, and I think that's what's, and it's, I think, you know, no one wants to put the parents.
receivable in half right now, we wouldn't be looking to give them four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Well, I mean, I'm not sure, I mean, again, I'm not sure.
And that keeps rolling over, I understand that. So, I mean, it's not something that's gonna go away completely. We're not gonna be on a cash basis, but.
Well, let me ask you this, so we, we moved as well, what kind of people do you want me to, to form a committee with? I mean, a physician, if we can find a physician that would be on that?
I think somebody, you know, you got the folks over at, um, the insurance office, you know, that's, um, was it Avery Hall? You got some folks over there, you got some people in the medical. I think, you know, somebody, of course, from the executive's office ought to be on there. Somebody from the council wants to be on there.
CPAs.
CPA would be good, you know.
Yeah, but you're gonna need someone who really understands this industry.
What about coastal hospice?
Yeah, I would certainly.
How's that? Cause I know that there's been some.
Yeah, I.
How would we be working with that? Is that a, is that a possibility?
We're still, we're still working with David. We're still seeing how we could put it together so that it works for him and it works for us. But, but certainly if we were to do something like Joe's. But, but certainly, if we were to do something like Joe's suggesting, you know, David is one of the people who, who I would look to to really, you know, give us advice and give us help.
You got Kevin, Kevin, was it Kevin over at Avery Hall? I can't think of his name. Nice. Is it Kevin?
Kevin Hart.
Kevin Hart, you got Kevin, you got Susan Brown-Workman, you know.
Can I get somebody from the council that would like to participate in that too?
Ernie would probably take that one out. I would say that cynically, I mean-
I, I would do it. I mean, I could do it, I mean.
We'll try to get something together next week.
Yeah, I mean, if you all think that's a good, I'm not pushing on it, but I just thought it would, we'd do it with-
No, I think it's a good idea, Joe.
We'd do it with everyone else, you know, and, um-
But, you know, we're, then we're counting on that money to keep it going, so we can go through this committee.
Kevin Hayes.
Kevin Hayes, yeah, Kevin Hayes. He's on Sweat, I think, too.
Yes, he is.
Yeah.
Exactly.
But, I mean, really, when we came here today, uh, two reasons really, was to really give you the in-depth dive, if you will. I think we've, we've done that, but the other was, you know, to be able to proceed ahead with papering up the loan, or if council has a different idea. I think, I, I think it's cleaner to structure it as a loan.
I, I think Mark would agree with you on that.
That'd be good, I mean, yeah.
Goes back to the airport.
Possibly, like that possibly.
I'm not counting on it.
So, you know, I, and, and, and then we could put together, certainly, by the budget cycle, we could put together, um, our, um, our proposal, if you will, as to, this is what we believe it would take in order to make the facility viable long-term.
Yeah, really.
And at least breaking even, if not making a profit. So I think we owe you that.
That's what's really important, is, you know, what are those real capital numbers on that reinvestment for?
Correct.
I guess we could put Steve on that as well, CPA part.
Uh, may I ask a question?
Certainly.
I, I, we generally do enterprise studies, and Heather and I have had conversations in the past. We'll continue the trend analysis like we have in the past. I, I have five pages of notes here, but I'm going to ask one question. Do you know off the top of your head what your bad debt expense was last year?
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I've thumbed through here, I don't see it.
Keep forgetting we have an asset here.
No, let's see. Yeah, the, well, I know the provision for last year, for June 18, was only 72,000. The year before, it was 411,000.
Now, the 411 was a one-off to try to get the aging report back for some sort of sanity, right?
That's correct.
So that's more or less a one-off. And how is that, I guess, the follow-up question is, how is that related to the current losses that you're experiencing on, on the bottom line? Is that, is that related, do you think? In other words, are-
Yeah, there's not been any direct write-off, but I can't attest to the receivables. And so if they have grown, the receivables at the end of June was 800,000, and they're up to a million now.
Right. And that's, that's good receivables, as far as you can tell.
Yeah, again, we don't do the same analysis as we do for the audit. One of the things, just to, one of the things, just so you understand, when we come in to do the audit, one of the key things we do for all of our nursing home clients is, we actually take the AR bounds as of the period, so in your case, June. And we, anything that's 90 days or over, we actually have it summarized, and we have the client go down line, patient by patient by patient, to explain to us exactly what the situation is. And we're pretty conservative, so if they can't tell me definitively that it's collectible, we either make it 100% for the allowance purposes, we either make it 100% uncollectible or some, some percentage. When we went through fiscal June 2018, many of the things that were, as of June, that were over 90, over 90 days or more, because we came in in the end of August, end of August, early September, a lot of it had been collected. So one of the things, if you look at it, the receivables at the end of June were 800,000, the revenue through September is a million nine, and our receivables are only a million. So we've been turning it.
At one point, we had an outside agency working with us to try to collect some of this, uh, in the past. Are we still doing that? We have ceased that.
No, I fired them. They were charging us $65,000 a year and doing nothing.
Yeah, they, they, in my opinion, they promised you something they couldn't deliver.
So they never, ever really showed us any results?
No.
Okay, all right, thanks.
My understanding is you hi, you hired them because they convinced the predecessor administrator that they could overturn the state's denials of the Medicaid.
Right.
Did not happen.
Okay.
That's what happened.
Don't you turn it over to collections and it gets a percentage of the collections? I have no idea. Are we talking about the federal government, talking about the state?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're not, yeah. See, the other thing you got to remember-
Steve, the questions that you have, please share them with them, I guess maybe through email or something.
Yeah, you know about the questions.
We'll, we'll schedule our regular interview and clean up some of this stuff, and you'll get the enterprise report.
Yeah, because whatever you have is going to be beneficial to council and the executive as well.
Oh, yeah, sure.
And the only recommendation, when you form your committee, that I recommend is you do need to, to talk to and hire an architect, if you're going to get the costs, because what you got to do is come up with the proper design, and then once that architectural, so you're going to have to pay for this part, once you get that kind of an architectural design, because the only way you're going to figure what this infrastructure cost is going to be, is have architectural designs and then talk to a construction company.
Got you. I think the committee, as, as being formed, probably wouldn't get into build, uh, redesigning the nursing home right off the bat.
No, but eventually you will have to look at that.
I got to get a handle on the capital of that.
If Ernie doesn't want to be on the committee, I'd be honest.
Well, what it's going to cost, we do it.
So when do we, when do we revisit this, and what are you going to bring to the table?
Again, what I'm looking for today is-
The 487.
Being able to move forward on the cash infusion. I don't think we have any choice on that. I think we need to do that to stay in operation. I would recommend we structure it as a loan. And then, I could probably come back to you, John, with a meaningful update in like 30 days, if that makes sense.
And how long does this 487 last? How long does that get biased?
How long was that projection?
I think that gets us through the, that gets us through the year.
I think it gets us through the fiscal year, John.
Yeah, right now, based on what we're, if everything goes as we planned, we were projecting a potential loss of 427 by, by this coming June 19. So that would cover you for the year.
Right.
And if, and if we, if, if we could make, I still rec, I'm telling you, I still recommend whether, I, if you don't want to do nursing aides, that's fine. But I still telling you, from a businessman's perspective, I think you need to make those other cuts. Even if you cut off $100,000, that's going to save you part of your loss.
So, and, and I can tell you, any nursing home you go to, you're going to wait when somebody hits that buzzer, even a hospital's same.
Oh, yeah.
They don't come running when you hit that buzzer. So that can't be expected.
You're always going to get complaints in a nursing home.
Whatever measures you're going to take, you got to be very definitive about it, and I think as quickly as you can, I mean, this is televised as well. So I, I would not want so many people to be suffering in angst over what, what their future might be.
We'll get on it. Do we want to, do we want to spin ahead and have a close work session?
Yes. Well, yeah, we're getting, we're, I just want to make sure we're closing up all these things.
No, 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 I got you. Yep, I'm with you.
Okay. Anything else? I'm good. All right, so we entertain a motion to adjourn as we go into closed session. Second?
Second.
On favor?
Right.